The time is 6:00 PM. I'd like to be mindful of everyone's time and call our special legislative session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Rawls?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez? Ms. Bowers?
Present, please note Councilman Rodriguez is excused this evening. The invocation will be led by Councilwoman Rawls.
Thank you, President Bowers. Good evening, everybody. Let's just take a moment of silence for anybody who may be going through anything, for anybody who had any passings in their family, and just a moment of silence for our country and for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls. The meeting agenda notes that Councilwoman Rodriguez will lead the Pledge of Allegiance, but I will lead it this evening in his absence. If everybody could please stand. Thank you, everyone. For communications this evening, we would like to take a moment to recognize the season accomplishments of the Driven From Within AAU, 12U, and 10U basketball teams. We have a number of proclamations to share. Councilman Jones will read those for the coaches. Councilwoman Rawls will read the proclamations for the... The 12U, and I will be reading the proclamations for the 10U. Sorry, we switched right at the last minute. So, we will be reading those proclamations. Following the reading of the proclamations, we would ask everyone to come up and join us so we can take some pictures and continue our recognition and celebration of your accomplishments. Sound good? Okay, we'll begin with Councilman Jones.
Thank you, President Bowers. Again, we want to thank you, all of you here, the parents. Let me start with them first. Got a little, you know, flack from them. No, I'm messing with you, but... Now, we definitely do want to recognize you. You know, there's a lot going on in the city of Harrisburg. These children could be running them up. So, we want to congratulate you and thank you as well for putting the time in. I know it's a natural thing and you don't feel that you need to be thanked for it, but again, you see the state of our city and we don't take that lightly. So, I want to congratulate you, your parents, on your continued rearing of your children. Also, we want to recognize you coaches as well because, again, I can say this about a lot of issues. There are so many things going on in the city of Harrisburg. And to give our children something to do, something challenging, teaching them camaraderie and how to work together is very important. So, at this time, we would like to acknowledge you, coaches, and thank you for your service with our children in the city. So, the way that we're going to do this, because there are a slew of names, I'm just going to read one for the coaches and then we'll acknowledge each individual. When we call you up, you can just step up and receive your proclamation. Is that okay? All right. So, this first one. Famous guy. Whereas, the city of Harrisburg recognizes the Driven From Within Boys AAU, 10 and under basketball team for their dedicated commitment to teamwork and each player and coach and parents equally sharing their talents and individual strengths. Whereas, the group of young athletes, this group of young athletes, was hastily assembled and was formed in March of 2024. Each player brought their own set of skills and high level of determination to the court every day, which resulted in immediate success as they progressed through different tournament brackets. And whereas, this team was comprised of individuals with raw talent that led them consistently through tournament brackets and into championship games. And whereas, unfortunately, each time the team would fall short of winning the championship game, the players and coaches and parents became even more determined to win and never became discouraged. This consistent pattern of losses in championship games caused the coaches and players to refine their strategies and strengthen their cohesion as a team. And whereas, after several defeats in championship games, the team intensified their training sessions, refined their individual skills, and developed a deeper understanding of each player's strength and styles. And whereas, under the guidance of Driven From Within staff, enhumded by their shared common goal, the team learned the crucial lessons of composure in the heat of battle, strategic decision-making on the court, and unwavering belief in their abilities. And whereas, this newfound resilience propelled them to their first tournament championship and to eventually secure the runner-up position in the 2024 crossover Hoops National Championship. Now, therefore, be hereby proclaim that on behalf of Harrisburg City Council, I, Lamont D. Jones, congratulate Coach Micah Davenport on his leadership accomplishments and wish him continued services in his endeavors. I'll finish reading. All of the proclamations say the same thing and I'll acknowledge the other coaches at this time. Coach Jaron Edwards. Coach Charles Finley II. And Coach Frank Armstrong. Now, stand up here, Micah. Micah. This one, we... What you want them to do? What you want to do? What you want them to do? Okay, but then we're going to take one as a whole. Okay, Councilwoman Rawls, or pass it back to President Bowers?
Oh, okay. Thank you. So, the 10 and under team proclamation reads the same way as the proclamation for the coaches. So, I'll just call all of the players' names if you don't mind and you can come up, get your proclamations, and then we'll take a picture. Does that sound okay? Okay, this one is congratulating Mr. Charles "Chucky" Finley III on his athletic accomplishments. And we wish him continued success in all his future endeavors. Congratulations. Okay. The next one is for Tariq Callaway. Did I say your name right? Tariq Callaway, I'm sorry. You saw me pause before saying your name, right? Congratulations, Tariq, and we wish you much success in all your future endeavors. Next, we have Jamir Finley. Congratulations, and we wish you success in all of your future endeavors. Levi Harrison. Congratulations, Levi, and best wishes in the future. You're welcome. Next, we have James Ratkey. What's your nickname? Mac, okay. Well, congratulations, Mac. Best wishes to you as well. Next, we have Aiden Santos. Okay, Aiden wasn't able to join us this evening, but we will clap and wish him congratulations. And then we have Aiden Stackfield. Yay, Aiden. Congratulations. Best wishes to you in all of your future endeavors. So, if everybody could please join us with a round of applause for the 10 and under team. Sure, if you guys, you can scoot down. It's okay. Okay, we're going to come around and take some pictures with you guys, too. Councilwoman Rawls will acknowledge the 12 and under team.
Yes, all right. So, first up, we have Kyrie Roland. Congratulations. Next, we have Phoenix Armstrong. Flight of the Phoenix. Great job. You're welcome. Sorry if I do say it incorrectly, but Kojai Arp? I'm sorry. Good job. Next, Joshua Bowles Jr.? Bowles Jr.? Oh, okay. Here you go. Congratulations. Is it Javar Edwards? Javar, all right, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure I was going to do a J or the H with it. I know. Sorry. You're welcome. Octavius Harrison. Did I got that one? All right. Good job. Elijah Walton-Wattonlington? Okay, there we go. Listen. Yeah, you as long as your last name. Good job. That was it. U12, 12U.
The coaches of the 10 was the same.
So, you can get in the picture. Just give it to someone.
Hold on, step up, boy. Yeah, I'll be good. Everybody good?
Everybody good? About to pass out, my stomach is.
First, we want to thank everybody for having us down here in the city. Councilwoman, councilwoman, we appreciate it, we appreciate the recognition. And, um, we consider this a victory. So, with every victory, we have a victory chant. So, we're gonna do it. We step in the court, we mean what?
Business!
We step in the court, we mean what?
Business!
Who's standing on?
Business!
What?
What? What? What?
Okay. Um, really quick, um, just a slight minor thing I want to do, the U, um, U12 or 12U? I'm sorry if I'm saying it. 12U, okay, because I'm saying it like soccer right now, so I'm a soccer mom, I'm sorry. Uh, it read differently on the proclamation, so, um, they had a different story, and I want to make sure that's acknowledged and everybody hears it, so can I please have one of the proclamations from the 12U so I can read it? That's fine. I want to acknowledge, um, each of your stories. So, I need to make up for the name because, man, I was like... I'm sorry. Uh, whereas the City of Harrisburg recognizes the Driven From Within Boys AAU 12U basketball team for their dedicated commitment to teamwork and each player and coach equally sharing their talents and individual strengths. And whereas this group of young athletes has risen from the ashes from a very challenging 2023 season while transitioning from a recreational basketball team to an AAU team and began the season with a disappointing 59-8 defeat. And whereas this team finished the 2023 season with a dismal record of one win against 13 losses. And whereas these resilient young athletes were determined not to repeat the past. The Driven From Within coaches challenged the team to embark upon a rigorous journey of improvement. And whereas this journey included intense training sessions focusing on fitness, skill, development, and building a strong team bond. They were determined not to repeat the past and cultivated a fierce desire to make a complete turnaround, improve their potential on the court. And whereas the 2024 season became a spectacular display of a complete transformation as the team compelled an impressive record of 22 wins against four losses. They also, um, excuse me, sorry. They also just, um, demonstrated a deep desire to never quit in spite of what the circumstances may look like. This desire to never give up showed itself in a game where defeat seemed imminent. In the late stages of the fourth quarter of a game, down one point, and the team pulled out the victory. And whereas this newfound resilience propelled them to attain four tournament championships in the clinching of the 2024 Crossover Hoops 12U National Championship. Now, therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that on behalf of Harrisburg City Council, well, and I, Lamont D. Jones, which is not me, but congratulate Elijah Waltonington. Of course, I got that one again, I'm sorry. On this athletic accomplishment and wish him continued success in all his future endeavors. So, congratulations. Walton, I try, I'm sorry. I get all tongue tied up. But yes, so congratulations. And here you go.
Thank you all for joining us this evening, and again, congratulations on all of your successes and future victories. We're claiming it.
And I just want to say, I hope that this gets onto every news outlet. I see they're not here tonight for such this type of accomplishment, but there are great things happening in Harrisburg, and it needs to be seen. And not just the pain that we continuously see on TV, but highlighting the gifts that we have here. So just thank you for bringing this.
Thank you. We will continue with our meeting agenda as printed. Next, we have courtesy of the floor, just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Uh, if you would like to share a public comment this evening, please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You will have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper, and I'll begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment? You can use the microphone right here. Thank you.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Mark Giles. I live in, uh, I forgot the name of that part of the section of the city. I had, uh, spoken before this council at, um, at an earlier occasion concerning, uh, the unhoused population in this city. Bring it up a little bit. Can y'all hear me better? Okay. Um, as I said, I had spoken before this council before, uh, concerning the unhoused population in Harrisburg. Since then, I had, um, also spoken before the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners, as well as met with them privately to give them, uh, some detail about the plan that I had written, uh, to provide housing for the entire population. Uh, they loved the plan, but their whole, uh, stance was that all of the money that for this fiscal year was already allotted to other, uh, programs and services. On the 18th of July, I spoke with, uh, the DCED, and I, again, uh, presented my plan to them. The, uh, results of that meeting was very, very encouraging. Uh, they told me that they had a grant that specifically fitted the plan that I had written. Um, the problem with that is, they said, they said that I needed, uh, a municipality to, to, uh, partner with me so that you can, uh, apply for the, the, the funding on my behalf. Or on the behalf of my nonprofit, because they wouldn't allow a nonprofit to, um, apply for it. So what I'm here tonight to ask is that we enter into a partnership, uh, to get this funding and move forward with building this housing, uh, for the unhoused population here in Harrisburg. Um, there is an urgency to this because where they are staying out, uh, by PennDOT, that area is slated for a highway expansion, which is going to happen by the end of this year. The good thing about the plan that I had written, uh, we can produce this housing within 90 days. I have taken the liberty of doing the research as far as code, uh, whether, um, it was covered by HUD's code. It is not. Um, it is under the local and state codes that are in place. So we can move forward with this. Uh, they also just, they also encour- encouraged me to seek, um, land on the Harrisburg State Hospital grounds for that, for this endeavor. Um, they said that they are open to allowing us to use, utilize space there, but I would like to have other alternatives in place. Um, you know, through a, a, a private meeting with you guys so that I can present all of the details of the plan to you so that you can have a clear understanding of how we would go about doing this. Uh, the good thing about this plan is this. It would, one, provide the housing that is needed for the unhoused population. Two, it would take the pressure off of the Harrisburg, uh, City Council and the Mayor's Office to produce low-income housing. What that does is, um, give us the opportunity to step back, reassess the, uh, the resources that we have already in place, streamline them, and then use them in a much more effective way. Meaning, there is a list of houses that are, or properties and lots, uh, under the, under the, under the, um, the ownership of the city. Over 300 properties and lots. Those properties can be reconstituted in these low-income neighborhoods and then made available to those who are, who have went through the process at the transition of a housing compound and became capable of sustaining housing and employment. Now, the plan calls for...
I'm sorry to cut you off, but that is your time.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Thank you. If you don't mind, saying a few minutes after the meeting, uh, our Building and Housing Committee Chair, Councilwoman Davis, can speak with you about next steps? Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Seeing and hearing no one, we will move forward with the meeting agenda. We have one resolution for consideration this evening, Resolution 41 of 2024. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 41, 2024. A resolution approving the 2024 Annual Action Plan for the City of Harrisburg for the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnerships, and Emergency Solutions Grant Programs.
Thank you. We are joined this evening by the Building and Housing Development Department for the city. I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules just for brief discussion. I know, we all know that the public comment period has ended, and the, uh, workshops or work sessions were held on July 23rd, I believe. So just so we can get a little bit more detail, um, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules for discussion.
Motion to suspend for discussion.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you. Good evening. I will defer to our Building and Housing Committee Chair, uh, Councilwoman Davis, to lead any discussion.
Thank you, President Bowers, and thank you, um, Director Gloria Martin Roberts. There's so many names, I gotta try to...
All those words.
Um, okay, so the last time we met, we had a public hearing. And since then, we have been made aware of the success of the July 23rd, um, workshop, application workshop. And if you would, could just tell us a little bit, um, about that? I know that there were, uh, was it 51?
51, uh, potential, um, applicants, uh, participated in that workshop. Uh, we're having another one, uh, next week. Um, there will be, uh, two sessions at 10 o'clock and a two, just like we had one before. Excuse me? Oh, you want the date?
Is it the?
August 6.
6?
I got a lot of dates going on in my life right now, really. Yeah, August 6th, and, um, Civitas will be conducting those workshops also. They're our consultants from HUD. And, um, it's to give information to potential applicants on what is expected in terms of, um, writing their application and submitting their application, related timeframes, and what they have to have them in. And, um, uh, and all the appropriate documents that have to be included in their packet, in their application.
And thank you for that information. Now, has the link been set up yet?
The link was set up the next day, as we promised. They can go on the city's website, and they can access the application, the conflict of interest form, and all the other forms that are required.
Okay, so to connect to the webinar or Zoom, is that linked?
That is also on the city's website, uh, if they're interested in, um, participating in the August, um, workshops. It's open.
Thank you. So basically, that's an update, um, of, uh, everything that has taken place with this, uh, workshop. I'm pleased to know that we had a good turnout. I don't have anything else to say. I would turn it over to my colleagues for questions or comments. Um, Councilwoman Jones, I mean, Councilman Jones. Sorry, Councilman Jones.
Uh, no, uh, Councilwoman Davis, I, I don't have any questions, but I do, uh, commend you guys for the work. Um, and that date is what, August 6th? What time?
10 o'clock.
All right.
And the second one is at 2:00.
All right.
So you can sign up for that. And, and those of you that, that participated, uh, in the July workshop, if you want to come again, come on.
So I was going to ask you that, I do have a question now that you said that.
You know, it is a requirement, I want to say that, for persons that, it is a requirement that if you're going to submit an application, you have to participate in at least one workshop.
And, um, what are some of the qualifications, just to reiterate for the public that may have missed that information? What are some of the qualifications for them? Are you looking for, uh, I would take it that you're looking for new nonprofits and things that have nature to, to apply, but also the ones that apply before are still welcome, right?
Yeah, we are, we, we are welcoming any nonprofits that are submitting. We don't make, uh, preconceived notion on who qualifies or not. We have to read their applications and make sure that they fall in line with HUD regulations.
That's all I have.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Ross.
Uh, good evening, how are you?
I'm good.
It's good to see you, um, Director Martin Arno. But, um, well, I don't have any questions. I thank you for keeping us, um, up to date with everything and, um, giving us updates about what's happening and how many people showed up. I thought that was really great, I, I appreciate seeing that data. And, um, I was just reading over the action plan, but I didn't have any questions on it. So, thank you.
You're welcome. I will say this, we will be submitting the, uh, 2024 Action Plan to HUD on August 16th. It's due. Um, it's ready, I just released it to, um, our consultants today for final. And so that we will have it into HUD before the 16th of August.
Okay, thank you for that. And, um, President Bowers, any questions or comments?
Just one question regarding the application deadline. Um, it is August the 22nd at 5:00 PM.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you again. Um, I was on the call on July 23rd, and I was very impressed with all of the information that Civitas was able to, it was just very thorough. So anyone who is applying for the, um, grant should be very well informed about what's required. So thank you again for...
You're welcome.
Keeping us informed.
You're very welcome, I love you.
Oh. Um, Councilwoman Daniels, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, what's the status of, uh, uh, grantee applications from 2023?
What, what is the question?
What is the status regarding the applications from 2023?
We don't have the applicants for the 2023. You mean the 2022?
The 2022 fiscal years, the applications that were submitted, the 2022.
Well, the ones that have, um, that had no, uh, issue or conflicts, they've received their letters, um, and their contracts have been, uh, released. Um, for those who kind of were, were in a, um, uh, a middle position where we needed clarification, we've been meeting with those persons directly, uh, to get clarification. And upon that clarification, their contract will be released. The ones with the conflict of interest, it's a conflict of interest. And so they were notified that there was a conflict of interest. And, um, um...
Go ahead.
I have addressed, and so have... I have addressed, and so has, um, Mrs. Tamika Moore, some of those applicants, um, that have a conflict. And we pretty much, um, deferred that to legal because I wasn't, uh, here for the 2022. So, uh, that was deferred to legal for response.
And then the ones that were, um, were funds, the ones that were determined to have a conflict, were they invited to participate in the, these workshops?
Absolutely. Absolutely. They were notified that if they had a conflict of interest in 2022, it, it will not prohibit them from applying again.
And then, um, this is for lobby, or has lobby secured conflict counsel to advise counsel on how to proceed going forward regarding CDBG funds?
No, and I have no intention of doing so.
Okay, thank you. And that's it for me, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. Count, uh, Vice President Green, do you have any questions or comments for the Building and Housing?
Thank you, I don't have any questions. Um, thank you guys for being here tonight. Thank you for the session, uh, that you put on on the 23rd, and I look forward to the August session.
Thank you, Vice President Green. Okay, well, this concludes my report and I would, uh, recommend that we vote in favor of this. Is this allowed to vote?
Yes.
There was another question. Um, the first page, the request of the legislation page references a land development plan?
That's just a typo, these are template forms.
Okay, thank you.
As I was saying, I recommend that we vote in favor of the, uh, annual action plan. Thank you very much. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to resume our legislative session.
I don't know.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So we have Resolution 41 of 2024 before us. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it one more time?
Resolution 41, 2024. A resolution approving the 2024 Annual Action Plan for the City of Harrisburg for the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnerships, and Emergency Solutions Grant Programs.
Thank you. Council members, are there any final questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution 41 of 2024? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution 41, 2024 passes by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Council members, is there any old business for discussion? I have one note, just scheduling, just a reminder. Uh, Harrisburg City Council will resume our summer break. We will return on Tuesday, August 27th, 2024 at 6:00 PM with a legislative session. Is there any new business? Councilman Jones?
Yeah, just want to give a reminder out to everybody. Um, you see, last week, I believe it was, council, uh, dedicated a street to, uh, Coach Desri Mangas. Um, there is going to be a bas- a two-day event, basketball tournament in the Reservoir Park, August 10th and 11th. We encourage everyone to bring out their children, bring out their lawn chairs, have a good time. There will be music, um, other activities for some of, from, some of our youth and service providers, uh, available. So make sure you mark that on your calendars and come on out, August 10th and 11th. The first annual inaugural Des- Des Mangas Classic.
Thank you. Any other new business? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the time is 6:44 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.